I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first item on the agenda is public comments on agenda items. The public comment period is a time slot set aside on the agenda for citizens to address the Board of Education. The open meetings law does not require that citizens be allowed to participate and speak at Board of Education meetings other than public hearings. The law specifies that the public has a right to attend board meetings except for executive sessions. The procedure for public comment is outlined in Board Policy 1230. Citizen participation. A total of thirty minutes is set aside for public comment at the beginning and the end of the meeting. The maximum time allowed for any one speaker is three minutes. Public comments at the beginning of the meeting are limited to items on the agenda. Persons who wish to participate in the public comment portion of the meeting must state their name and a specific topic about which they wish to speak. As speakers must limit comments to issues appropriate for public discussion. Compliments or complaints about student discipline, specific student issues, or personnel must not be addressed during public comment. Interruption of board discussion is not permitted. In the interest of civility and respect for different points of view, outbursts from the audience, applause, or other types of disturbances or disruptions are not permitted. Under no circumstances will booing be tolerated. The Board of Education recognizes its responsibility to hear and respond to public comment. As stated in Board Policy 1230, the Board is not able to answer questions at the meetings but welcomes your statements. Any questions from the public should be submitted through the use of the public comment form, which may be obtained online or at the desk with the district clerk. Responses will be provided within two business days on the district's public comment responses page so that everyone may receive the information. In addition, the Board of Education is happy to receive by email, on the board email, your questions or concerns at any time so that we can help you address them. Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this time? Seeing no one, the next item. Oh, okay. All right, and the next item is slight change to the agenda. We're going to do spotlight on students, so that's 5.02, so they can get home, so they can get up, because I have, tomorrow, because I have to get up so incredibly early to go to school. So, all right, so we're moving. Five point, do we, do we have?
I made a motion.
Okay. Mr. Rubin moved that we make that adjustment to the agenda. Do we have a second? Mrs. Karab, all those in favor? You next.
Okay, so this evening we have special performance from two of our RCD choir.
We can't hear you.
Yeah, just louder. Okay. So, this evening, Ms. Rubel is here with two groups from our state, and she's going to take a moment to introduce them to you. Three students are still on their way because they were auditioning before this, so they're on their way carrying out, but by the time Ms. Rubel gets everybody organized and set on the risers, everyone should be here. So these lovely ladies, they're coming after school and everything is ready, and we have a mix of ninth graders through twelfth graders. We are missing some of them. Again, some of them are on their way, they're on their route from John Jay, they were there since Christmas Eve today. So they're, I don't know if any of them have been eaten or gone home yet, so thank you so much for being here, and thank you for allowing us to share with you. This is our Rubin's Choir, and this lovely lady here is our sophomore, she's our conductor for the evening, this is Miss Asian Rubel. And we'll be performing these called "Christmas Star." Perfect timing. Akapella, now, remember, Akapella, stay here, we're going to do flip flop, so ladies, you can use your phone to take a look as well, because we'll make a picture of us later. Akapella, can you guys join us? How many people's there? Do you want me to ask a song? I thought it was, you know, it's true. Chris Columbus. One of the hubble lovers. Okay, how many of you just auditioned and you could be here? How many of you, how many of you had dinner?
(Inaudible)
This group is also comprised of ninth grade through twelfth grade, and our student director is a senior, Mr. Robert Clarks. And, yeah, tell them you're going to be here. Robert's just accepted his group donation. He's briefly going off to be music educator. He's been running this ensemble for two years. Our.
Hi. For my introduction, I'm Robert Clarks, student director for the Akapella group. The piece over here is "Night on the Night," and it's arranged by the comics.
Silent night, holy night, all is calm, all is bright. Round yon virgin mother and child, holy is so tender and mild. Sleep in heavenly peace, sleep in heavenly peace. Oh, sleep. Silent night, holy night, silent night, holy night.
All right. Returning to the printed schedule of the agenda, 4.02, communications and announcements received by the Board of Education. Mr. Galena? Mr. Lumia?
First of all, I attended a JV, normally I joke about basketball games, but I went to a, not John Jay, but JV basketball game, RCK. And to see these young men play, I can say that the RCK basketball team has a great future. I mean, the kids are really, really, really good. Also, I attended a resident tournament this past Friday. The moment one watches the matches, the moment appreciates the hard work that these athletes put forth. I'd like to congratulate Randy Earl and Tala Aldris for winning their respective weight class, and to Francesco Berlascoli, not Berlascoli, Berlascoli for placing third. I attended a music concert at RCK this past week. I'm jealous of the ways the students, as well as these particular singers, sing and play their instruments. The jazz band, in my opinion, is just as good, if not better, than any professional band. Hopefully, all of you can attend the prison concert at RCK this coming Tuesday and Wednesday at seven o'clock. The concert has always been exceptional. I mean, the students are really, 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 really good. This past Friday, I went to the Second Annual International Night at Gina High School, all of the members, very good. Even the following was exceptional. I was truly impressed by the singer of Mrs. Andrea Burton-Burbers. She's truly an excellent singer. Our students are fortunate to have her as a music teacher. I attended the District-wide School Safety Committee, as well as the Long-Term Development Committee, and of course, our Capital Improvement Committee, along with some of the board members. So with that in mind, that's it for tonight for the time being. I'm sure I took some of the thunder away from everybody, but it's okay.
Mrs. Galena.
Sorry, guard geek, to keep you waiting. A couple of quick mentions of RCK students acting out in the community. The first was, I believe it was the RCK Choir, I am not positive, who sang at the Village of Wappingry's Falls Veterans Day Ceremony, and it was truly beautifully done. And it's so good to see both large high schools so devoted to the arts for their students. The second thing, I'm speaking now as a social studies, U.S. history teacher. I was at the open house for the historic Visier Homestead, also in the Village of Wappingry's Falls, and watching RCK seniors being the docents for the guided tours, and having everybody listen so respectfully to their knowledge, which was quite extensive, made my little history geek heart poke pitapath. They were lovely, it was just wonderful.
Mr. Rubin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had the pleasure of attending the Dutchess County School Boards Association meeting as a representative for Dutchess County Board. I attended our district school safety committee meeting, went to the RCK High School winter concert, what a, all these concerts, what a pleasure. Wappingry's Junior High School was the concert. I went to, along with Mr. Lumia, the Van White Junior High School International Night. That was so well-accompanied, I have to say, that I believe twice as many people were there last night as, at this time, as they were last year. I would like to say that the food was outstanding. Mrs. Pelton is not here, she had a dish that was out there, a dessert dish, but Mr. Lumia only had one piece of that.
Yeah, the rest of it was a bit, whatever his name is, Rubin, he had it all, he said he didn't want it for anybody else.
And, she's not, it was, it was really good. I would also like to take a moment to compliment this district. The performance tonight was just the latest example of how I believe this district has outstanding students in not just the music, but in every type of endeavor which we put our minds to. The students truly excel. And I'd also like to give a compliment to the district. There was an article recently about the Kipser Journal that the Kipser Journal ran, in which they sought information from various school districts, I believe, on school closings. And I would like to compliment the administration for apparently responding to that in the family manner, because we will mention it in there. Thank you.
Mrs. Karab.
Yes, I also attended the International Night at Van White, it was my first, and I was very impressed with all the hard work that went into it. Fifty, sixty different dishes, kids helping at every station, and there was enough food for everyone, and there had to be five hundred people there, according to Dr. Shucat. So, my thanks to all the families that put a lot of time and effort into making that a great success, as well as the teachers. It was just, it was very, very nice.
Mr. Souchelle.
Continuing with International Night, I attended this past Friday night. Would like to compliment Dr. Shucat, the parents, the students, and everyone involved with that event. It was rather spectacular with all the different types of food. What caught my eye was all of the students, there were giant mats put up on the wall in the cafeteria, and all of the students needed to highlight where their families had come from. And it was very interesting to see the diversity that is represented throughout the district with a lot of dots. There seemed to be a couple of dots around the North Pole, I do believe that was done as some humor. But it was a great night, the performances by faculty, and the students was outstanding, especially the Indian wedding dance. Those two girls were phenomenal. I'm not sure if somebody videotaped that, but if they did, that might be something Ms. Watkins, you could try to put up on the district website. That dance was outstanding, and those girls, either they rehearsed that, or they just knew that, but that stood out, as well as the other performances as well. So I just want to thank everyone in the community for participating for that great night. Thank you.
Mr. Burasani.
I'm still getting my feet wet, sorry, I didn't have the chance to join you guys at the International Night, I had a prior commitment, but I will try to know it as soon as possible in the future.
Just one comment to follow Mr. Souchelle as regards to those two, those two girls, Indian girls, they were exceptional. If they didn't practice, they're fantastic, I'll tell you again, they were really, 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 really good, I mean, incredible.
Perhaps those people from the North Pole, Santa and Mrs. Claus, tried them. I attended the Strategic Planning Committee meeting, the Audit Committee, and the Capital Improvement Committee. At the Dutchess School Boards Association meeting, we had a fantastic presentation on the state financial aid that our district gets and what we, and the intricacies of it, the presenter was fantastic, he kept us all interested in this very complicated issue for a couple of hours. And it certainly shows that we all need to go and talk to our legislators about straightening up this mess. Because it's so complex and convoluted that.
They're not having things straightened out.
Right, they need to straighten it out up there in Albany, because it's very, very complicated and confused, and maybe isn't doing exactly what they want to do in terms of fairness. All right. Also, I, last week, I went to the Human Rights Watch at the Wallace Center, which, they were looking for people from all different fields of concern, and I was on the education track. And again, one of the issues that was brought up was this whole issue of school financing, and how, and how the burden of how we have to pay for the schools is not commensurate with where the money is and with what the schools need, and that this system totally needs revising. So that was interesting, because it followed right up from what we had heard the week before. I hope to get to a number of these concerts, I seem to have had meetings every night last week, and I certainly hope this week will be much better, because it could be a lot more fun without the concerts and the International Night.
Tuesday and Wednesday night.
Right. It's on my calendar. All right, four points, there are three committee reports. Audit Committee, Mr. Galena.
So on November twenty-second, we held our last Audit Committee, we had a meeting. Mrs. Kellen was there, Mr. Souchelle, myself, Mrs. Grandle, and Mr. Pedro. We met with a representative from the accounting firm that's going to do our internal risk assessment. One of the areas we're asking him to focus on this year is textbooks and purchasing and use of textbooks. We also reviewed last year's, the 2015-16 External Audit Management Letter and Corrective Act Action Plan, which is also on tonight's agenda. You know, we'll have a much discussion about that later. There was just one issue that the Board is going to be looking at to take action on, the excess funds in the, in the fund balance, fund balance, excuse me. And we have a couple options to consider on how we want to handle that. Our next meeting is on February seventh, the Audit Committee, and as Mrs. Kellen and Mr. Rubin mentioned, on December first, Dutchess County School Boards Association held their last meeting. Mrs. Kellen, Mr. Rubin, Mr. Carrion, I think Dr. Bonk, and Mr. Zip was there as well. I was very disappointed I couldn't make that meeting, I was very much looking forward to it, and I was glad all of you can make it. Dr. Rick Timms really puts on a good presentation, and I reached out to him to try to get some more information, and I'm going to, I'm going to get some of the, some powerpoint, some of the handout stuff that was given. The next meeting for the Dutchess County School Boards Association is on January fifth.
Capital Improvement Committee, Mr. Lumia.
We had a meeting on December seventh, the attendees were Mr. Gross, President Kellen, Jean Aupinat, Mr. Souchelle, Anthony Sanjameen, Ms. Otmar Watkins, and of course, Rhombek Architect Phil Zemke. What was discussed is extensive, I'll just point out some of the things, the summary can be found on the district webpage, but some of the things that should be mentioned is, first of all, Phase One Documentaires reported to the New York State Department of Education on November seventeenth. Work includes the athletic field and paving and some interior work to be done this summer, this coming summer. Full brought up a set of Phase One plans to the meeting, they can also be reviewed anytime at the facility operations office at RCK's high school. The district-wide, we kind of did the Smart, the School Bunk Act, the district-wide hardware upgrade, intralox and new key system is complete. So far as the carbon monoxide detectors, RLJ work in school buildings, the completion date will move to January 2017. This, the PBS is demolishing the press box at RCK, they will continue, they will, they will complete as much work as possible before the weather sets in. The district is looking back to board for the internet connection. And the 2013 capital project received all COSAR documents as of Friday, December second, and I am processing, reviewing those documents. The storm removal hookup is the last, I have to be finalized. Last but not least, Mr. Gross told us that the payment equipment is in. Last but not least, Mr. Gross told us that the payload equipment is in, kidney rot has been started, light tack at Oak Grove has been done, ready for basketball hoops, J Evans black top has been done. All testing regarding lead has come back, that we have free lead, lead fair, she say. V I is pulling some samples this coming week of our schools. The district is also replacing fixtures that failed. So again, much of what I just said, and that's some, can be found on the district webpage. So please, our next meeting is the first Wednesday of each month, everybody in the community, I see so many here, welcome to come. So that's it.
Thank you. District-wide school safety, Mr. Lokey.
Good evening, thank you. Yes, on Wednesday, November thirtieth, we had our committee meeting, the attendance was from board, with Mr. Galata and Mr. Ruben and Mr. Kellen. We spoke briefly about the...
We spoke briefly. We spoke briefly. Absolutely.
We spoke briefly about the district-wide safety plan that is currently posted to our website for public comment, and, you know, there was no, there was no comments from the committee per se about that. We spent a good deal of time talking about the visitor management procedures that all of our schools follow, with regards to the technology that's in place, and, and whether or not there was consistency amongst the schools. There was nothing really negative to say about any of those processes. We did talk, we spent some time talking about the efficacy of our participation in the national registration for sex offenders, and our ability to screen them effectively. And it was recommended that we provide follow-up to some of our building administrators, as we go to Princeton speaking this week, and one of our attorneys is going to be coming in and speaking with us at the Princeton meeting with regards to that topic. If we don't have a set time to meet again, we're talking about meeting again in spring to talk about the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen district-wide committee plan, unless, unless it's a request, of course, we're supposed to meet soon.
Thank you. Legislative Action Committee, Mr. Slow Shower.
Thank you, Madam President. At our last meeting, past, past month, the committee is now trying to focus on some other issues that obviously affect the district. We put out several different topics, but it looks like we're gonna focus on the unfunded mandates, which obviously we're all familiar with, as well as the gap elimination. So the plan moving forward is to, again, craft a letter to then present to the board for approval to send out. At this point, there is an opening for a community member, so if anyone is interested, if you could please send your email or a letter of interest to the district clerk. We would like to fill that spot, so that we do have a full committee in order to move forward. We do have a meeting coming up, I believe this is, excuse me, it's January nineteenth, Thursday, and so if anyone is interested, if you could please, again, send something to the district clerk. Also, on the agenda tonight, we do have to fill another board member to round out the committee, hopefully to move forward, so hopefully one board member does have a little time, they would be able to join that committee and continue the work. Thank you.
Thank you. Policy, Mr. Lumia.
I'll just say something, that I got an email from the chairman of the Pelton Settlement, she could not attend the meeting. Just was like, everybody to know that the policy committee is continuing work on home bound policy, and will review and feedback from all stakeholders at our next meeting. And that's basically what she should know, is Pelton, get the name of the board. To that, I believe we have some policies to, for second reading, yes it is, so we'll work diligently to try to complete the manual as much as possible, the policy as much as possible. That's it.
Thank you. Five, are there any questions related to any of the committee reports? Five point zero one, superintendent's report.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Education, good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank, thank again the John J Ensemble that was here, performing. We continue to be consistent for the second year in a row, where we spotlight our students throughout the district. I see Principal King here, she should be very proud of her students who performed earlier in the meeting. I also want to thank the board for letting the students perform first, we try to have the students in and out, especially now with this inclement weather. We received an email from notifying that the weather's going to get really cold tonight, and the roads are gonna be slippery. So for all of the high school students that are here, first of all, thank you for coming. You can get your signatures if you haven't, and once you hear that the consent agenda was completed, please feel free to start heading home, so you can get home safely. What I'd like to share with you also is that we're so very proud of you, completing your senior year. This ends one chapter in your life, and it's a great time. And what I say at every meeting is that the expectation is for you to have an unforgettable year, in the most incredible way, which is to do great academically, to take advantage of all the opportunities and events that are being offered by your high school, and to just make your parents really proud of you as you complete your senior year. I'd like to indicate also that this, this past week, at John J High School, they hosted the event for our first annual English as a New Language Social, which involved all of our students, K through twelve, that are E N L students and their families. It was a great event, under the Department of Curriculum Instruction, Dr. Cardwell, Lizette Centron, our director, she did an incredible job, and all of our building administrators were there, I see some of our building administrators here right now, that were there, and I'm sure they will concur with me, that it was a great event, to see how our high school students volunteered to help host the event, as well as having many of our students and their families that speak minimal English coming together, and we provided them with two sessions, and I think we, besides our parental workshops, the sessions that we provided our parents with were how to become more comfortable with navigating themselves around the website, so that they're able to communicate with different individuals throughout the district. While the parents were at their workshop sessions, the great thing is, we had two sessions for the students, where they created so many different little projects, in sort of like an arts and craft session, and along with Dr. Shukat's event, as you indicated, the food was incredible. So congratulations to them, then. As far as the Dutchess County School Boards Association, as President Kellen, Madam President, spoke about the, the meeting, and, and Mr. Galata also mentioned Dr. Timms, I will be providing you all with the presentation. The reason why you didn't get it this Friday, it was an array of information just being fired at us, and I can tell you for two hours, he had my undivided attention. And so although it was tons of information, I need to wrap my head around it, and still ask a couple of questions to the other four that were there from our district, to make sure that when I write it up, you can get a good summary of what the presentation was about, but I have every single intention of copying the PowerPoint presentation and sharing it with you. It was, to say the least, fascinating. Thank you.
Mr. Ruben.
Just, Mr. Carrion is really just understating things, because not only was this gentleman livid, but he was rapid fire, like a machine gun coming out with things. If you look, you have to write on, make a note on a piece of paper, you were, he was five steps ahead of you. It was good.
Very good.
Six point zero one, Consent Agenda Resolution. Does anyone on the board wish to pull any item from the consent agenda? Seeing no one.
Resolved, resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve the following consent agenda items as stated. Six point zero two, six point zero three, six point zero four, six point zero five, six point zero six, six point zero seven, six point zero eight, six point zero nine, six point one zero, six point one one, six point one two, six point one three, six point one four, and six point one five.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Slow Shower, second, Mr. Galata, all those in favor? Seven point zero one, Designate Board Members to Serve on Committees. We have a list here of the current Board Committee, Board of Education Committee representatives. Anybody in the audience, or at home, you can also find it on the district website. At this time, we need some more people on some of the committees, and Mrs. Karat has requested that she be on the Wellness Committee, where we have a vacancy, unless there's somebody else who particularly wants the Wellness Committee, and we go with that. All right? All right, nobody else has sent me an email, so I, in relation to this, so we need another member of the Audit Committee. The charter requires three board members and two community members. Do we have people to serve on the Audit Committee? Or do I have to use my prerogative as president and appoint somebody? All right, okay, Mr. Munusami, would you like to accept that assignment?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. All right. We need another person on the Community Communications Committee. Do we have someone who would be willing to serve on that committee? Yes, we need a minimum, aside from the Audit Committee, where we need a minimum of three people, the other committees need a minimum of two board members.
Right, so if anybody would like to, because we are staff at the minimum level.
Right, as Mr. Ruben, the chairman of the Community Communications Committee pointed out, he can function with two people, but if someone else would like to be a third member, that's fine, we'd be happy to have you, he would be happy to have you.
Peggy, that's true.
Yes, that's true with the others too.
That, that, that's true with all of the other than Audit, that's true with everything.
Yes.
Minimum staff level of two.
Right, maximum of three, plus the president, ex officio. All right, seeing no one, maybe someone will be interested later. Legislative Action Committee, okay? At this point, we need at least one other board member for the committee to function. We can have two other board members. Does anyone wish to serve on the Legislative Action Committee? If anyone decides they would like to do so, please contact me. And I think that takes care of everything. The Personnel Committee, Mr. Slow Shower had been an alternate, so he moved up onto that committee, and the Wellness Committee, Mrs. Karat is, wishes to serve on that. Do we need a vote to make this official? No. All right, thank you. Seven point zero two, Approval of Amended Cold War Veterans Exemption.
Mrs. Detro, may I read this, and just say, be resolved that the Board of Education of the Wapenthus Central School District approves this resolution as stated, or do I need to read through this? Result by the Board of Education of the Wapenthus Central School District, parentheses, district as follows. Whereas since September twenty-sixth, two thousand sixteen, the Board approved the resolution establishing and granting Cold War veterans exemption from real property taxes for qualifying residential real property owned by veterans, their spouses, and the unremarried surviving spouses of veterans effective March one, two thousand seventeen. Whereas the Board has recently learned that the New York State publication relating to the exemption on which the Board based its resolution contained an error concerning the percentages and the dollar amounts authorized by section four, five, eight, dash B of the Real Property Tax Law. Whereas as a result of this error, the resolution cannot be processed by the Dutchess County Real Property Tax Service Agency. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education of the Wapenthus Central School District does hereby amend its resolution establishing and granting the Cold War veterans exemption by amending the numbered paragraph one to replace all references to eight thousand dollars with twelve thousand dollars, in conformity with the section four, five, eight, dash B of the Real Property Tax Law as follows. One, an exemption equal to fifteen percent of the assessed value of such property provided, however, that such exemption may not exceed the lesser of A, twelve thousand dollars, or B, the product of twelve thousand dollars multiplied by the latest state equalization rate for the assessing unit where such property is situated. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be submitted to each assessor responsible for preparing the assessing at the assessment roll listing all real property situated within the Wapenthus Central School District.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Lumia, second, Mr. Slow Shower, any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Eight point zero one, Acceptance of Corrective Action Plan.
Whereas the Board of Education having accepted the external audit report as presented at the September twenty-sixth, two thousand sixteen board meeting, and whereas the Board of Education has also received the correct, the corrective action plan, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education does hereby accept the corrective action plan as recommended by the Board's Audit Committee and the Superintendent for Schools.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Slow Shower, second, Mrs. Goodman, discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Eight point zero two, Second Reading and Adoption of Policies.
Resolved that the Board of Education of the Wapenthus Central School District hereby approves the second reading of and adopts the following board policies, based upon the first reading by the Board and the recommendation by the Policy Committee as stated.
We have a motion? Mrs. Karat, second, Mr. Lumia, discussion? Mr. Slow Shower.
Just a couple of quick things. On homebound instruction, I know we had gone back and forth, and we had some revisions, and there was some input we gave to the board from administration on some recommendations for a change in this policy. I was just wondering if we may consider a quarterly report to the board as to where the district is in homebound instruction in relation to the students. Obviously, this has been a concern for, for many years, and I know that the new administration is working very hard in correcting this, and has brought on additional faculty to oversee homebound instruction, and to stay on top of this. I was just wondering if the board is in agreement that we could at least get a quarterly report as to where the students are and to process, if that's acceptable, regarding...
Well, so, did you want Mr. Carrion to answer that question before we go?
Oh, sure, that's all good. I had a couple of...
Is there anything you would like to say about it?
I provided the explanation, the weekly memo review, to, to that factor.
I take it part of the... Point of information, point of information. Madam President, point of information, I believe that the request stated by Mr. Slow Shower should be in the form of a resolution. If he has something to ask on a personal level with Mr. Carrion, I'm sure that Mr. Carrion would be delighted to respond to that. But this is a discussion and I think if he's asking for what to follow, to get on his side on this, it needs to be in the form of a resolution.
Did you wish to make a resolution?
Yes, I would like to make a resolution to include in the policy that the administration provide the Board with a quarterly report.
Does it have a second? Seeing no second. There's no votes.
I just say, I'm saying something.
Well, I think it leaves the second to discuss.
I'm not second and I want to bring in another discussion item.
Well, I think Mr. Slowshower had one more and then we'll reveal. Yes, Mrs. Slowshower.
So moving on. The other one was just under 5421, Head Injury Management. I was reading through, and I was just curious, curious, again, to say for, to make a motion, but reading through the policy, my concern is similar to what goes on in professional sports as to whether we have some concussion protocols and whether or not the Board wants to consider. And I don't know if that's within the scope of the policy. It, it talks about after-school activities and different things, but it's not specific to football games or basketball games or baseball games where if there is a head injury, what is our policy going to be on, on some type of concussion protocol? Do we want to look at having a student go through a similar process that is going through professional sports in college? Are we going to want the student to not participate in the next game if they're deemed to have a concussion? So I was just curious, and again, I know Ms. Pelton isn't here, if there was any discussion about that and I don't know whether or not.
I would make another point of order on this.
Yes, Mr. Rubin?
I would like to make another point of order that I believe that, that request for that type of information might be better, you would better direct that through to the Policy Committee, either to the chairperson or to Tim there, and then with that information, work through the Policy Committee about bringing that forth if necessary to the Board.
If I, if I may say something, if you look at the policy itself, 5421 is a regulation, first of all. It specifically states that any constable teacher, official coach, administrator, or any other district employee who suspects that a student has sustained a head injury shall immediately be removed from play and notify the school nurse. The school nurse shall in turn contact us to the parents, legal guardians, who may either take the student with or permit physician. Or if agreed to, by the parent, the legal guardian permits the student to be evaluated by the district, doesn't have a health care, health care provider, professional train, in any injury diagnosis and management practices. So as I think, as far as, as far as the regulations, I think before it can come back to play, it will be evaluated and issued, can, 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 can play.
That's right. I'll send Ms. Pelton an email. I, I just think it needs to be a little bit more specific. It's very broad as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Karaf, you have a question, that's second.
We can discuss this further in the Policy Committee, the next Policy Committee meeting, and I think we can get some more guidance from the New York State Public High School Athletic Association. Perhaps they have more specific steps that we could incorporate in the regulation. So if we want to remove that, I would move, I would move that we remove that from the group.
I'd just like to point out that the Board only votes on the policy and this is a regulation. 5421R is a regulation and the administration is the one who sets the regulations. We have the policy, which is 5421, but the details are in the regulation and so that really isn't something that we're even voting on.
Okay, so we can work with the Administration and the Committee.
Please don't hesitate. So I already gave Dr. Cardwell the eye contact and Dr. Gomp, the eye contact regarding this, so feel free to also copy them and.
Are there any other questions or comments on any of the policies proposed? Seeing none? Yes, Mrs. Karaf.
The, the homebound instruction, there's been considerable time spent on this, so I would just want to speak to Mr. Slowshower regarding the evaluations. The Administration does evaluate periodically. Again, I think we should discuss this in committee if we want to present a further amendment to this policy.
I think that a further, I think a further evaluation will come about homebound instruction. I believe we should pass this as stated and perhaps change it or tweak it a little bit, but as far as, as far as we should, we should just pass this as being the fact that was a recommendation that Dr. Pelton had made to me during the.
I add that the Policy Committee discussed it at two different meetings. We had a lot of input from the Administration and two people at the Policy Committee meetings have done, Mr. Lumia myself, have done a home teaching and have given assignments out to other, to home teachers to do for our classes, so we were quite familiar with the whole process. Mrs. Goodman?
Yeah, I, I think there is. I think there's a reference in the policy to superintendent guidelines and I think that that's, would fall under the superintendent's discretion. Policy is supposed to be a broad statement. I know that I have requested and I would like to look further at a change in the way that we do some things about home teaching, mostly to expand the eligibility for it, but that's not, the, the policy itself is not the place for that. And, and it's the Board's jobs to set policy and that's all.
Any further discussion or are we ready to vote? All right, all those in favor of adopting the policies as stated? Eight point zero three, Approval to Retire Policies. These are policies that you can check out, they're either covered in other policies or are obsolete, obsolete or are non-essential because they're covered elsewhere. Mr. Rubin?
Resolve that the Board of Education of the Waukato Central School District does hereby retire following policies based upon the recommendation of the Policy Committee effective December 13, 2016, as stated.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Lumia, second. Mrs. Karaf, discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, Mr. Rubin.
I would like to thank both our secretary as well as Ms. Pelton for doing the detail work on which policies have been retired and why they've been retired, where they were mentioned, so I'd like to come up with a report on that.
Thank you, yes, I'd like to second that. They have put in many, many hours above and beyond the call of duty. The policy manual, if you look at it, is humongous and they've really, you know, done a good job. Nine point zero one, Board Members May Request Additional Agenda Items, Discussion Items, or Requests for Information. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Mr. Rubin?
I'd like to request an addition to the agenda, please.
Do we have a second? Mr. Slowshower, all those in favor? Mrs. Goodman, Mr. Rubin, Mrs. Callen, Mrs. Karaf, and Mr. Slowshower.
Thank you. Madam President, I had spoken about this very recently. It has come to my attention that the McKinsey Journal is having an award out there, the Richard K. Wager, I think it's.
Wager.
Wager Award, Wager Workplace Inclusiveness Award, and there's a lot of information on this application that you personally could not fill out. We would like, I would like to make a motion that the Board direct the Administration to complete this nomination form and to send it in on behalf of the Waukato Central School District.
Do we have, do we have a motion to, to discuss, to consider this? Did you make the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a second? Mr. Munisami, discussion? Mr. Slowshower?
Could, just for the sake of, could you just elaborate as to?
Who the guy is?
What is, what's, what's the details of this, just so everyone in the community knows? Thank you.
The Richard K. Wade, Wager? Inclusiveness Award, a tribute to Dutchess, Dutchess are also county companies of nonprofit organizations, organizations innovative, innovative in producing workforces that reflect the diversity and benefits of organizations and their communities. They give awards to smaller companies, nonprofits of 100 or less, and to larger companies. Over the past couple of weeks, we've had some, what I consider just shows our ability to try and be inclusive of all things. It's not, I don't necessarily know in terms of the workplace how we do that with our employees, but I've seen as an example our winter holiday concerts, which I think tend to be all inclusive, certainly the International Night at Man Wyng Junior High School just showed, oh my God, must have been 100 different countries, if not more. We have E and L activities and I, there's probably a myriad of other activities that I think that we do, and I think that it's important that at least others in the community, that we make the outreach effort to show what we are doing.
Excuse me, what is the due date for the application?
December 31st.
Mrs. Goodman?
With all due respect, I think that it's really unfair to ask district senior staff to work any harder than they're working to nominate the district for an award that doesn't, which is about the workplace, not about how it reaches out to the public. Consequently, I think that if you want to publicize the great things the district is doing to show how inclusive it is to all students, and I think it is doing those great things, I do not think that this is the appropriate forum and I also don't think that the senior staff are the people to do it. If, if you feel that you want to do that, get the information and do the nomination forms yourself. I don't think we should do it with senior staff.
Any other discussion or comments? Mrs. Karaf?
We, if we could decide on a venue for discussing this further in terms of whether it's appropriate, I'd be willing to discuss it further. I'm not sure if a committee should look at this or not, but I think what Mr. Rubin is attempting to do is laudable. It's not quite the type of recognition though of what you're thinking of. I think it's more of the workforce. It's, it's, it's inclusion in the workforce base. We may be able to meet the parameters of that, I don't know, but it does seem to me that it's going to take a little bit more work to see whether it's appropriate.
Mr. Carrion, has something to say?
Would you, Mr. Carrion, would you like to take a look at the application?
Well, I think, I think two things, in all fairness, that, I'll say this since respectfully too, I'm, I'm concerned that at each board meeting I may be seeing an application that we're going to be directed to fill out for one situation or another, and, and as board members and as community, we can't, how do we decipher which one holds more validity over another? The other aspect, in terms of the work, and I think we've shared this before and it's a conversation that has been going ongoing with Dr. Bond, is really looking at our recruitment efforts in terms of, and I'm not telling, and I know that we've had this conversation in the court planning team as part of the strategic plan, not, not looking to purposely hire a diverse group of people, but in understanding that we have to increase our recruitment efforts of looking at viable candidates from all walks of life. And we know that with the recession, it's only been very recent where recruitment fairs have begun all over again. Recruitment fairs were big throughout the county and throughout the state and for the past seven to eight years, they were nonexistent. And just as of last year, they're beginning to start again due to the economy and it's, it's, it's a place where if we were to be audited and looked at our, our representation of our staff, I don't think we're very inclusive, or I know that we're not very inclusive, so I don't know what's in this application to, to indicate in terms of our inclusivity. But more importantly, the other piece too is, as I said before, that I think that with all the different committees that we have that are led by, and I'm not going to point one committee over the other to say that they can take this on, but, but I would indicate that something to caution.
Mr. Carrion, okay, I hear what you're going, what you're saying, and with that, with what you've said, although you've said it, yes, and I do listen to you, contrary to what you think, I do listen, that, that diversity is a strength and we try and build on that strength and you have been very, very good at that. But with hearing what you've said now, then I would like to withdraw that and perhaps maybe next year we might reconsider something like this, or at least the Administration might consider that, but I will withdraw that resolution.
I second that. I'll second that.
Ten point zero one, Comments from the Public. Does anyone wish to speak at this time? Seeing no one? Could we have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Mr. Rubin, a second. Mr. Rubin, all those in favor? Unanimous.